Welcome back to the afternoon session of our public hearing and public meeting. Today, March nineteenth at the Remarques Preservation Commission. We are resuming this afternoon with public hearing item number two. And I will turn it over to Corey Herala to take us through the afternoon agenda.
Thank you, Sarah. Starting with public hearing item number two, LPC twenty-four dash zero six six four three. This is an application for certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, block two thirty-eight, lot seven, one nineteen Pierpont Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a church built and designed by Minard LeFever and built in eighteen forty-four with an attached chapel built in eighteen sixty-six. The application is to replace parts of the brownstone spires with a substitute material.
You can start when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair, Staff. My name is Angel. My name is Angel Ion. I'm the Principal of Ion Studio, Architecture and Preservation. And I'm delighted to be here today to share with you our proposed work at First Unitarian Church in Brooklyn. And with me today are Tejal Sutriba from Ion Studio, and also Tom Chek and Renee Strickland from First Unitarian, who will be making some introductory remarks.
Good afternoon. My name is Renee Strickland, and I serve as the Director of Building Operations and Events at First Unitarian Congregational Society in Brooklyn. And Angel's already introduced us, but I wanted to say that I'm also here with Tom Chek from First U. Tom is a longstanding member of the congregation who serves as a deacon and is the member of the Facilities Committee that oversees this project. Now, before Ion Studios presents their extensive research and planning for our project, I am pleased and honored to provide a bit of context as to who is bringing this application to you. The First Unitarian Congregational Society was founded in eighteen thirty-three by ten families who grew tired of taking the ferry over to Manhattan for services every week. It took them nine years to raise twenty-eight thousand dollars to hire architect Minard LeFever and build the Gothic Revival Sanctuary that was named the Church of the Savior. In the early nineteen hundreds, the plain glass windows were replaced with stained glass by Tiffany Studios. Today, we have two hundred seventy-five active members whose mission is a joyful, caring community that inspires and empowers people to grow spiritually, care for one another, and work for justice and stewardship of the earth. And speaking of stewardship, we also are proud stewards of this historic building. Thirty years ago, Olive Hugan Bloom published a book detailing the rich one-hundred-fifty-year history of our congregation and our building with extensive notes on the maintenance and restoration efforts that we've had since the beginning. The Brooklyn Historic Society, which is now the Center for Brooklyn History, has archived ninety-nine boxes of the source material that she cites in her book. A decade ago, another book, A Slim Compendium, was published detailing the additional work that has been done since Olive's book of how we have continued to maintain this property. Not only do we have a congregation that uses this building, we are proud members of the broader Brooklyn Heights community, and we share our space. We have a pre-K program Monday through Friday. We have overflow classrooms for Saint Anne's School during their extensive construction. We have after-school theater and music classes. We have a dozen recovery groups that meet every week in our space. We hold concerts, plays, and other performances, and we have community gatherings. We also have special ceremonies for both congregants and non-congregants, from baby blessings to judicial inductions to memorial services. And so that is a little about the rich history of the people who use and love this building. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Ion Studios to present our application. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee, and Angel. So thanks, Renee, for the brief introduction and history about the First Unitarian. I'll talk quickly about the site and the context. So it was initially called as a Church of Savior and was designed by one of the renowned architects, Minard LeFever. We can see it is placed at the corner of Monroe Street and the Pierpont Street. And it is within the Brooklyn Heights Historic District as well. I will quickly talk about the historical context over a span of one eighty years about what's really happening at this beautiful congregation. These are the original drawings by Minard LeFever, which date back to eighteen forty-two. We can clearly see that, oops, sorry. Yeah, we can clearly see that the spires have a lot of details and articulations at these veneers. This is an early impression in eighteen forty-five, which talks about and which clearly shows the articulations at these octagonal bridges of the spires. Moving ahead, the original photo of eighteen fifty, where we can again see the details and ornaments at the spires. We're going to call them croquettes for our references. But as we start moving ahead, it became clearly evident that the details of the spires were being degraded because of the material, which is brownstone. Here are the early photos in nineteen twenty-two. We can see the same in nineteen thirty-three showcasing the same nineteen thirty illustration. And it becomes pretty evident in the nineteen forty tax photo, where we can see, as we move up on the veneers, the details at the ornaments are being lost as compared to the ones on the lower end. This is the early photo of nineteen fifties, where we can see the installation of the pipe scaffold around the central two spires. We are not quite sure what the extent of work was, but definitely there was some work that was taking place at the spires. This is the early Habs photo from nineteen sixty-five, and then it becomes clearly evident that most of the details at the spires were lost. Another photo from the LPC archival collection showcasing the same, where the croquettes and most of the details have been lost at the spires. Right across our congregation, there is another church, which is the Saint Anne's and the Holy Trinity Church, which was constructed by the same architect during the same period, using the same material, which is brownstone. We're all aware that brownstone, being the soft sedimentary rock, it degrades fast. So this is the early illustration of the Saint Anne's and the Holy Trinity Church. And because of the stone decay and the construction of the subway, they had to remove the tower as well as the spire detail. Another example, which was constructed by the same architect, Minard LeFever, during the same period, using brownstone, is the East Church in Salem. And due to the degradation of the brownstone and fire, they had to reduce down the central two spires. The reason why we've introduced these precedents are to make sure that we do not go in the same lines of with our church and the spires that's happening in the context. I would like to quickly talk about the timeline. The church was constructed in eighteen forty-four, and right after a hundred years, there was one set of repairs that took place at the veneers in nineteen fifty-two, the photo that we showed about the scaffolding. And just in the next fifty years, in nineteen ninety-one, there was another episodes of repairs that took place at the veneers. And in next thirty years, we are at the same junction and discussing what we really need to do with these spires. I will quickly go through about the pre-existing conditions from nineteen ninety-one to ninety-six. We can clearly see that most of the details at the brownstone has been lost. We can see that there is, there is, there is spalling, there is cracking, delamination. And we also see the missing stone details. And in two thousand twenty-one, we were hired by the Unitarian, First Unitarian Church, and Ion Studio was requested to do the existing conditions report and what's really happening at the church. But before I start explaining with these towers and the existing condition for our reference, I would like to say that we are all aware that the First Unitarian Church has four towers. And the outermost towers, one and, the outermost towers, we are numbering as one and four, and the central two ones, we're numbering as two and three, looking from the Pierpont Street or the Principal Fisad. So this is tower number one, which is at the corner of the Pierpont and Monroe Street. And we can clearly see that there is a horizontal crack. We also see there is cracking, delamination, and biological growth. I will quickly run through the existing conditions of all the four towers. Again, in tower number two, the central tall tower, we have the horizontal crack. We have poor patch repairs. We also have the biological growth in this tower. This is tower number three, where we have the horizontal crack again, poor patch repairs. We do see delamination, crackings, falling, and biological growth. And in tower number four, we can again see the horizontal crack. We have delamination, cracking, and again, the biological growth. It is interesting to see this deep horizontal crack that is present in all the four spires. And when we were on the scaffold and we were on the top and we touched the spire, it actually moved. So it's something to really take care of and need to be done. Besides that, these are other general conditions on all the four spires, where we see crackings, falling, poor repairs. We do see cracks that not only run horizontal, but vertical around the whole length of the croquettes or the ornaments. We do see poor patch repairs. We do see the horizontal crack again. We do see resurfacing failures at different locations, missing units, missing stone units, ornament details, and also the failed stones at various locations. We also did a probe test at tower number four, and what we clearly saw, and what we really saw was, we wanted to understand what's really happening inside this brownstone cladding. And the core is made from un-reinforced brick masonry, and which has a three-inch-thick brownstone cladding on top. So what exactly are we proposing? We are proposing to replace the existing brownstone with a substitute material. And in this case, we are talking about GFRP. GFRP stands for, stands for glass reinforced polymers. But before we dive into the question, why are we using GFRP is one of the key focus that we want to talk about. One, that is, it's lightweight. We do not want to add any more weight on our spires. It's durable. It can match the existing brownstone color, texture, and tooling pattern. It also has, we can match the existing details. We have fewer seams, and also we can conceal the lightning protection cable. So this is the existing, this is the proposed south elevation of the Principal Fisad. And what we're proposing is to replace all the existing brownstone above the horizontal crack and replace them with, and replace them with the GFRP on all the four spires. This is, again, the proposed east and west elevation. But when we took a closer look at the spires, we realized, besides removing the horizontal, besides removing the existing brownstone above the horizontal crack, we have to also cater to the croquet line. And in case of tower number one and four, the outermost towers, the two croquet lines at the north, and this is the Principal Fisad, need to be replaced. And hence, that's what we're proposing. And so this is the existing tower number one, and this is the proposed tower number one. And the gray section is what we are, the gray highlighted section are the GFRP units. Similarly, in tower number four, this is the existing tower and the proposed one, where we are trying to replace it with the GFRP. However, in the case of tower number two and three, the central tall towers, we realize that we would have to replace all the eight octagonal bridges croquet, and that's what we are showing in our drawings. We're also working, and we worked on various details, one which comes in relation with a GFRP unit, where we want to make, where we are proposing the lab joints, so that we have less seams. And also, in case where it comes in relation with the brownstone, we want to ensure that there is less seams. And if there is seams visible, we want to match it with the existing. Few of the other details of the anchorage and how the croquettes are going to be installed at the ridges. Besides that, we also did a laser scan and to realize and understand what the existing conditions of the towers are. So this is tower number two and three, and we can see that they have the missing ornaments or the details. And this is how the proposed after the GFRP is going to be installed. So this is the before and after. Similarly, in tower number one, where we see the missing units, this is what we are proposing and how it's going to look after the GFRP have been installed. So this is the before-after. This is our GFRP sample, and I would be happy to pass it along. So we are confident that we would be able to match the existing brownstone, match its texture as well as the tooling pattern, and we can pass that on to things. We're thoroughly working with our manufacturers to ensure that all of our designs match as close as possible to the existing. And we all know that the Pierpont Street is quite narrow, and there are a lot of trees. So we started, we, we had a render done. This is the existing render from the, from the, from the Pierpont Street, where we see the missing GFRP, missing ornaments, and this is the proposed one with the GFRP units. This is from the South Fisan. Again, we're talking about, we're looking at something which is one forty feet above the ground. This is where we have the missing details, and this is the proposed rendering where we have the GFRP installed. Similarly, this is from the Pierpont and the Monroe Street, where we have, this is the existing, where we have the missing details. This is the existing rendering, and this is what the proposed is going to be. So even, we understand that GFRP has been used in a lot of historic buildings. And that's why I wanted to throw a bit light about the precedents that we researched about. One is the Woodrow United Methodist Church in Staten Island, where they have installed the GFRP infill panels at the Bell Fry. Besides that, another project that we worked on was the Twenty-seventh West and Eleventh Street. We had installed the GFRP cornice. And it's interesting to see the metal, the metal framing behind the GFRP cornice and how it's been installed. This is our third example, interesting one, which is the Lyric Theater at Times Square, and where they installed the GFRP ornament above the cornice. Thank you so much.
I will pass it on to Angel for the question.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, have we questions? Yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
Technical matters related to this, but I hope you could help educate and get others. What is the expansion characteristics of GFRP? How might they differ?
GFRP is a man-made material. It tends to be relatively stable. It's not a material like, unlike aluminum, steel, that have a high coefficient of thermal expansion, and therefore is prone to a lot of expansion and contraction. GFRP is typically more stable. So you can, you can, you can anticipate that it will have a coefficient of thermal expansion similar to masonry. And that's also why you use it extensively in these kind of material applications, when you have cornices and so on. It does require joints, but, but.
But you're putting it on, it's all sitting on, on kind of the metal framing of some kind.
Correct.
So the metal framing is going to.
But the metal framing is embedded. It's, the term is laminated within the FRP, so.
So because it's embedded, which, which is, which is, is the GFRP stronger? So it's going to restrain steel from moving?
It's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to embed that metal, and it's going to be fully attached to it through the lamination process. So the metal will be free to move within that shell. So in essence, you have a structural attachment to the masonry, but the shell would be surrounded by metal.
I guess I'm asking, the reason I'm asking is because obviously you're anchoring this new armature to hold stone and grid. And one of the reasons why maintenance has lasted as long as it has is because it's relatively monolithic, right? So any water that gets in there, it dries, bleaches out, it's all over the structure. It's all moving at the same rate. Now you're going to be removing some of that material, putting in a waterproof material that has a, the steel anchors that go into the masonry. So is there going to be any possibility for freestyle and thermal movement, et cetera, at those bolt points, at other points, you know, what maybe other grid, where the croquettes are, where you're attaching them, that you're going to be creating new weaknesses and stuff?
We don't anticipate that, because we'll be installing waterproofing along the top of the masonry. Let me also say that, no, it's not a monolithic, homogenized material. As Tejal mentioned, you have an un-reinforced brick masonry core with a three-inch brownstone cladding that has seen a lot of movement and decay, which is the reason why we have all the, the process of deterioration that we've seen over the years and repairs. So there's been a lot of movement there. But the concern about the, the, the interface between the GFRP and brownstone, we'll be installing waterproofing on top of the existing masonry to remain, to prevent that if there is, in any case, the water will get into that cavity. Water can actually be whipped out. And the same, the way that these croquettes on the, on the sides, we're going to be resurfacing all existing brownstone. And then those croquettes are going to be attached. The way that they're going to be attached, it's going to be anchored on the center to the brownstone. So also, it's going to be a ceiling along the detail, along the.
That ceiling, yeah, ceiling's not going to last as long as the church is around. The ceiling, ceiling will fail off.
Well, eventually, it will have to be maintained. It's, the idea is just to install something that is, that is, it's going to be maintained. It will have to require some maintenance, but it's going to last way longer than what we've seen that any masonry construction has lasted. This, this is a building where we've seen that there have been issues from the very beginning with stone deterioration. And now that we've taken a closer look at it, we understand why, and so that.
So can you explain again, why the croquettes only fail with the upper segments, the towers, whereas the lower segments, they move over the top?
Right. Our assumption is that the way that the brownstone cladding is attached to the masonry, you have ferrous clamps. So below, those ferrous clamps have enough masonry on top of them that even if, even the water gets into the, into the stone, those ferrous clamps start to corrode. When they expand, the rostjacking, it still have, there's enough weight on top of them to counteract that rostjacking. It seems to be very consistently at that, at those given locations, where the combination of the, I'm going to call it diameter, of that octagonal base and the weight of the, of the masonry above the brick and the stone above, it's not enough to counteract the effect of the rostjacking coming from the anchors, and it just.
It's falling. It's a, I mean, the, the way the puddles look, it didn't look like it was bursting from within.
So it is falling on the surface, because you have, you have ornaments that are made of brownstone that were in monodenture like this, but now we put them like that. So this is, this is happening. But we also see corrosion of the metal, the concealed anchors of the brownstone that are corroding inside that breaks the infill and.
Last question.
Yeah.
Why not use a, a more monolithic synthetic product that has a similar kind of quality to a masonry like the GFR?
Well, the main concern is weight. So GFC, it's still a cementitious-like material, so it's going to be heavier. And we're very concerned about the capacity of the existing un-reinforced brick masonry core to continue to support weight. A heavier, larger member, replacement member, will require deeper anchorage into the existing masonry to remain. So we're trying to be careful as to how much do we want to get into that core without creating more problems. The initial thought, the initial reaction for the installment of this was that we would actually embed at least twenty-four inches into the, into the stone core opposed to support all of that. Once we realized that we have un-reinforced brick masonry, and if we were to drill a lot and really deep into it, we changed the strategy to have now a steel tube that is attached to the plate that is vaulted in four points with shorter anchors down to the masonry, because we don't really have a lot of confidence that if we can drill really deep, are going to make things better, but probably it's going to make things worse down the line. Trying to avoid that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
I'm curious about, why didn't you put foam inside? You put the steel and foam to hold it in place.
Right.
And I've seen that done before. Why decided not to do that?
So. Can you repeat the question? I want to ensure I understand. You're asking why we decided to do. You, you still had to figure out a way to connect the GFRP shell to the structure, because. Right, but that, you have to have, you have to, you have to connect it not only vertically, but also horizontally. So they're actually, we're creating three units, and each of those units, at the end, they have a steel plate that is connected to the unit below. It's, it's, it's a void. It's a void, in essence, is a, there's no need to infill it, because the structural connection through this ma, middle piece that is attached to the bottom and at each intersection between the FRP units. So there's no need to fill that void with material.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
We are proposing for that, for that material to be GFRP, because we know that is very light, and that would really minimize the need for anchorage, less weight, and so on. So we're trying, we are concerned about the nature of the remaining masonry and to what extent the use of a different material would be considered a little bit more aggressive and therefore a little bit more injurious to the remaining un-reinforced masonry that it's still in a stable condition.
The, the two pieces that you strategically broken down as separate, almost separate elements. This is what I'm reading on the left diagram. What's below that is all original fabric. And then you're putting a plate in and mechanically fastening the plate down and putting a new hat on top of it.
That's correct. There, actually, the only thing is that there are three pieces. This is.
Yeah, okay, one, two, and three.
And we broke it down at the locations that makes sense to break it down to make molds. At the end of the day, this is about mold making. So this, this kind of flame at the top, it lends itself to be one piece. The, the more ornamental capital, like, it's, it's another one. And then the one at the bottom, which is just more of an octagonal tapered chaff, it's another piece, so.
Okay. And so I think the debate that we're having, or just in my head, is, is that hat masonry or is it GFRP? Is the, the simple option that I'm playing off, and what you're explaining is, is it's challenging to make it masonry because of the low difference, period.
Correct. And the ability to re-anchor that.
You would have to anchor down deeper into fabric, which concerns you in the stability.
Correct, because we're talking about un-reinforced loose brick in a, in a random pattern with a three-inch brownstone cladding. So in essence, these a hundred-feet-tall spires are, were built no different almost than the way a brownstone was built, and, you know, fifty years later. It's just a brick backup and a three-inch brownstone cladding. So we're concerned that by trying to do something a little bit heavier, we, it would be more injurious to the existing material fabric, to, historic fabric to remain.
It'd be, it would injure it more, but it might still be possible?
We would have to do more extensive probing to determine whether that's actually feasible.
Okay. And last question, how does GFRP weather in terms, because it's, the sample, visually, I'm not that concerned. It's so far up there, and it looks pretty convincing from a distance. But it does seem, it's basically, you know, a plastic-type reinforced material that's got a pigment on it. How does that weather?
So it's actually, you have the fiberglass.
Right. Right.
Um, uh, piece itself, and it has a something called a gel coat.
A coating.
So that gel coat is actually what gives you the finish of that and protects the GFRP from exposure to UV and it's a protective coating. And that itself has a lot of built-in, uh, uh, UV-resistant repair terium material that I can't describe, but it's designed, and then the gel coat has, is a product that has continued to evolve over the years to make the GFRP more resistant to UV and therefore more stable. So when we posed that question to the manufacturer, he's telling us at the very least, you can get a 50-year, you know, uh, for warranty in terms of the, the, the stability of the gel coat on the proposed GFRP because at that point, it's all chemistry with the resin trying to protect the, the fiberglass so that it retains the color and the stability and it's not subject to, uh, UV.
Okay. And last question, when you put the, the hat on, I'm sorry for the expression, but it just conceptually helps, um, am I going to see a line?
You, you, that line, so that transition.
Yeah.
Right. It also happens with places strategically where you have a transition between an area where you have those crockets and then those crockets are kind of flat, like at the top of that, at the top of that. So a bad line, you wouldn't really see it because you have those crockets projecting off. Although between, this is a tapered octagon, so between those ridges, there will be a sliver of brownstone that will be, uh, exposed and along that line would be GFRP above and brownstone below.
Below.
Between the crockets at that level, yes, there is an area where you see.
A line.
We, what we've been doing is just working with everyone involved in terms of trying to figure out how do we minimize that joint? If we can reduce it and limit it at least to a three-eighth of an inch. And we can because we, we can flatten the top of existing brick masonry to remain. That we can make it flat, we can put a waterproofing, uh, non-shrinking route to set up the tube that is going to be bolted into it. And then we can, the GFRP itself had those kind of legs that would allow us to really modify in the field if needed so that we can actually accomplish that three-eighth of an inch, uh, uh, joint between the FRP and the masonry. So we have a, a thin joint that it's barely visible, um, and, and not too distracting.
And there's no other joints around that entire shape?
There are other joints that are concealed, like there's a joint here between two, two members.
Just the horizontals, but the, those are monolithic casts, each section, it's not, there's not vertical?
Correct, correct. This, the flame is just one, uh, piece that is a joint there with the piece below, but you wouldn't really see this because you was looking from below. And then there's another piece between, another joint between these middle member and the paper member below, that it's just very thin. And what we're trying to do also is just trying to have an overlap between one and the other one so that there's a little bit of consistency in between those two. So there is another thin joint that you'll have between those two members. But no, vertically, there is no, there are no joints because this is, for lack of a better word, a shell.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
My big concerns about the maintenance, yeah, and bridge, towards the, towards the progress. I'm thinking about what happens if they don't make, if they don't provide the maintenance that obviously is required and silicone fails after 20 years, you know, water infiltration and spalling those anchors. Is there any way to adhere this product or a lighter product with a, with an adhesive that if it failed, the worst that would happen is that the piece of plastic would fall off?
I, I would feel more confident, uh, having a mechanical connection of a lightweight element that is going to be attached to a masonry surface in a way that it's not going to fly away. I would, I like the idea of having a, a, a physical anchorage.
What if, but what if, what if you knew that there would be no maintenance on this building for 100 years? What would you, how would that change your approach?
So in that sense, these anchors that are going to be embedded within the masonry, like these are the crockets in plan, and then that's the, they have a steel tube that have those anchors that come into the masonry. Those are all stainless steel. So we anticipate that, it doesn't mean that stainless steel never, never corrodes, i- it will corrode, but at various, at a slower rate than carbon steel and so on. So, uh, even after 100 years, the, the likelihood of that stainless steel tube and the stainless, the stainless steel anchors to corrode to the extent that they're, uh, leading to spalling, it's very unlikely. And so all these anchors are going to be stainless steel. And then on the, on the vertical side, the, the piece in the middle of that tube is also going to be stainless steel welded to a stainless steel, uh, plate that is bolted to the masonry with stainless steel anchors set in epoxy. We're putting waterproofing on top of the membrane to make sure that if monodation winds and eventually the water gets in, uh, it just doesn't go down the core and creates, uh, you know, damage on the masonry. So, and then, and, and then the other side, even if those seal, sealings, sealers were to fail, those are running along a tapered surface, so gravity will just help to make sure that that water really never gets in, but actually just runs down. So you have, on the sides, you have gravity on your side, just allow water to continue to run down until it gets to the top of some of those ornaments, just right here.
Okay, other questions? All right, we'll move to public testimony and come back to you. And is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this item? All right, noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
We do have an in-person participant, Ms. Judith Seditis.
Hello, good, good afternoon, thank you. Um, my name is Judith Seditis. I'm a, a member of the congregation, kind of representative of, of the homeowners in a way to kind of speak on the board of the congregation. I'm also a homeowner of a landmark house in the landmark district. The first thing I wanted to say to the guys is thank you. You do incredible work preserving the historical legacy of New York. I think that this project looks from the spirit in which you work and that you can tell that we care about preserving the, the heritage of the community. A lot about the technical stuff, which I'm not answering, but the one thing I, a couple things that I can keep in mind is that we also are a congregation and much smaller than St. Pat's for John the Divine. So we're looking at our cost issues and stuff, and we think about end reach. Um, and to prove that we are supportive of our community, I'd like to share something I already know, that we have support for this process from the Brooklyn Heights Association and Historic Districts Association. And finally, our own membership will take these old pieces of the building's spire. We're going to showcase them, we're going to enjoy them and show them off to prove that we really care about the maintenance that it technically needs. We need to change it for the safety of everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have a few, uh, pre-registered speakers participating on Zoom. Uh, the first is Jeremy Lexon with Brooklyn Heights Association. Jeremy, um, I will be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Jeremy Lexon from the Brooklyn Heights Association. We support the proposed work at the First Unitarian Church. We believe the church's team has articulated an appropriate rationale for using GFRP as a substitute material for some of the brownstone orientation on the spires. We also believe this team has done a good job thinking about preparations for designing, fabricating, and installing the GFRP. We do suggest that the team carefully observe the color matching between the GFRP and the existing or restored brownstone. They should make adjustments in the field as necessary if they find that the color needs tweaking. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, we also have registered to speak, uh, John Graham with the Victorian Society of New York. Uh, Mr. Graham, I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself and state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Graham for the Victorian Society of New York. The Victorian Society supports this proposal to replace the brownstone spires at the First Unitarian Congregational Church with a substitute material. The applicant has provided photographs which show that the exposed stone spires at this 1844 building have been repaired many times. That when these earlier repairs were made, a substantial proportion of the original stones replaced with cementitious material. That the composite spires now in place have numerous areas which are cracked or broken. That sections of the decorative carvings, which originally extended the full height of each spire, have been lost. And that the installation of the replacement spires will bring the building closer to its original appearance. Also contributing to our recommendation for approval are the spire's great distance from the ground, the inability to come in contact with material, and the poor durability of natural brownstone with this kind of exposure. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, our next registered speaker is, um, all right, that concludes our registered speakers. I see that we also have a raised hand from Historic Districts Council. I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself and state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. Angel Aon, whose firm is the applicant for this proposal, is on HTC's board, though he was not present for our committee's discussion about this item. HTC supports this application and finds it perfectly appropriate. Thank you.
Would anyone else in the Zoom like to offer testimony? Please raise your hand. Noting that no one has raised their hand, um, that concludes the Zoom participants and, uh, the testimony portion. I will also note that, uh, that this application did receive a recommendation for approval from Brooklyn Community Board, too.
Thank you, Stephen. So all of the testimony is in support, so congratulations for that. Um, but is there any final statement you'd like to make before we begin our discussion?
No, other than I just want to reinforce what René said initially, uh, we were delighted to be retained by the church and the, the, the church's commitment to their building. Uh, when we shared this photograph about what happened in other churches by Minnella Fever, I think it's, there's a very clear understanding that we're trying to do something here to prevent a situation where, like what happened in other, in any of those buildings that were truncated. So there is a sense of pride and, and stewardship in, in, in the congregation that I think is really remarkable. And, uh, and, and I'm delighted to hear that they are supporting that as well as, you know, uh, speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, any final questions? Before we move to our discussion? Okay. Yes, okay, go ahead.
So I, I do want to go back to the technicals. I, I do want to make this as successful as possible. And I'm just wondering, did you ever think about even creating minimal weep at the bottom? Because just let it get out if it gets in. Do you know what I mean?
So, yeah, so but, out of the concern is, is that even though we're doing waterproofing on the top, even though that these are three units with sheet lap joints that if water falls into one piece, it's not already over.
Yeah.
We, we're still anticipating that at the, at the bottom. Yeah, yeah. That, um, all of these flat surfaces, we're talking to the manufacturer to figure out a way that we can actually do something along those lines. The concern is that the moment you make a weep in a watery chill element, that also becomes an avenue for water infiltration because, so we, we'll have to figure it out.
Okay.
How to do it, where to do it, uh, I'm not worried about that being visible in terms of.
I was actually thinking on the scales.
Uh, on the, on the scallops?
Sides because that, you know.
There, we're less concerned, um, I may actually venture that, that it may not be needed because you're now running down on, on a tapered octagonal surface and that's going to be along that ridge. So any water that may potentially get is going to be through the sides, but it may just run down from the masonry. So there is no real opportunity for water and, uh, for moisture to, to, to trap water and at that particular location because it's just going to run down the masonry. The biggest concern would be at the other location where you have a, a whole, a flat surface, but along the crockets, that should not really be a concern.
All right, thank you.
All right. And if there are no final questions, we'll move to our discussion. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Okay.
Any opposed? Okay. So, um, first I want to thank you for being such good stewards and addressing, um, this situation before it actually became hazardous. And so, um, you're, I applaud you for, um, being very thorough in investigating how best to address deterioration at these, uh, finials, at these pinnacles. So, um, the question before us today is the use of substitute material. And to provide some context, I will say that the commission has approved both GFRP as well as GFRC and, uh, more often approves GFRC in masonry installations. But we did hear from the applicant that they considered it, but because it is heavier, they are concerned that that would require, um, deeper drilling into the, the core, which may, um, cause more damage or ultimately more replacement in order to achieve it. So to minimize damage and minimize the amount that has to be replaced, they're proposing the FRP. And, um, and I want to thank you for answering all those very technical questions that we had. And so we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, you can start this one.
I, I feel, uh, in added, with the rest of the technical. My step to that. I don't feel like I would be able to trust myself as a person, very, uh, better. The crucial question is, do you need to, I think the applicants, you do. I think that the, uh, work at hand is not merely aesthetic. It's not a sense of trying to erase history on the building, uh, which would be a concern. I, I think the weathering in and of itself, not sufficient reason to, uh, place something of the chip of gold, but I think that the presence of spalling, the fact that there are cracks that indicate loose, uh, the fact that tested it's loose masonry becomes a habit. So, so the, the need to do the work is clearly established. No qualms about using work per se. I think that the methods of, of attachment have to be looked at by somebody, our consultant, our structural consultant would have thought lots of that. Structures, I think that this might be a case where we should run, run it by them, in terms of the attachments. The other matter that Stephen referred to is its color issues. You know, it's plastic, it's, it's fire glass. If, if, if the likelihood that it's going to stay the same exact color and if the stone is going to stay the same exact color, you know, 50/50, I don't know, might happen, might not. Uh, and I think that that's a concern, but, you know, that argues, in my view, for a more masonry-based kind of surface as opposed to a plastic surface. But the applicants make the arguments as to why that shouldn't be. But yeah, it's an argument as to why that shouldn't be. And I think that the worst case is that you're going to do this, and if you're going to look weird up there, you're going to have these white stripes or brown stripes where the stone looks different. And I think that the person who's going to testify, I think, has designed something good. You should hold these materials on site and keep them around so that if something does go wrong, you have elements to put back. So I would look at this with the stipulation that it goes to our expert.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Well, I also am not, I'm looking at the, to the architects, and in this case, maybe none of our architects are specialists in this area. We'll find out as we go around. But clearly, I agree that the work needs to be done. And as you, Sarah, I'm very pleased to see often religious institutions are struggling with maintaining their facilities. And it's really good to see one doing this and addressing it in a timely fashion so it doesn't become a crisis. I mean, more of a crisis than it currently is. So, I definitely will support it. And I think as Michael does, the main issue is whether there will, it will be perceptible later on from the ground that there's, these changes have been made. And I don't know enough about it to know what to say about that. But I think it really seems sensible to use this material, given, you know, that it is going to be much more likely not to cause any issues because of the weight in this situation. As we often know, we've approved this for use in all sorts of buildings. So, you know, I'm okay to approve it. And if we can get any further information that would assist the church in its future planning, or even planning at this stage as to whether there should be any other, any changes in any of the elements, supportive elements or anything. But, you know, as it is, I would approve it as presented, and I hope that we can, that Landmarks, together with them, can do the best solution here. But I don't have a problem with use of the material based on what I've heard.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
My fellow commissioners have answered all the questions that I have any concerns about. And so I can approve it in terms of the comments they made.
Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I agree. I think that the applicant has made very compelling points. I think it sounds like they've researched it very thoroughly. And that because this GF RP is lightweight, you know, it'll do less damage. And I also wanted to point out that, you know, from the street level, it is very high up. So it's not like it's street level where you could, where it's right in front of you. So even if there are slight differences, I don't think it's going to be as visible as something that is closer, you know, to our sightline.
Yeah. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I mean, I think as well as my fellow commissioners would prefer this to be masonry. Clearly, as, you know, that's the intent of the original building. But because it is minimal in its scale size compared to the rest of the historic fabric, the intent is clearly to keep as much fabric as possible. I think the applicant has done a great job in explaining to us the technical challenges. We've, of course, done this before with real Dutchman material solid. But frankly, the structural condition here is, does seem like it could potentially be more damaging than helpful to the existing fabric. So I'm going to say I think it's appropriate. And I would echo Commissioner Goldblum's comment about getting just another pair of eyes on the details.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
So, I first of all want to thank you for a very good and thorough presentation. And the fact that you gave really thoughtful answers to all the probing of my fellow commissioners. I feel like you've made a series of good decisions and that this is supportive and that also the staff has looked at this. So I think this is appropriate. And I understand the comments about masonry, but I think you've explained here why you want a lighter material, which makes a lot of sense.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so I think we will make a motion to approve this today. And we can ask that the, that our structural engineer, our consultant, review the final details.
Regarding 119 Pierpont Street. The application is to replace brownstone spires with a substitute material. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Brooklyn Heights Historic History. I also note that the brownstone spires were restored in the 1950s prior to the nation whereby most of the directly propped were removed. Later, for solder repair and resurfacing campaigns, were approved at multiple times at a staff level. Nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety-three, and ninety-six. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the existing spires where brownstone is proposed to be removed show evidence of multiple repair campaigns and are highly deteriorated, cracked, and spalling, deep lamination. That the proposed work will recreate original elements that have been missing since the nineteen fifties, thereby bringing it closer to its original appearance. That the existing crocketed finials atop the spires show evidence of them being replaced and that they are particularly vulnerable to falling, failing, given their highly exposed location and tenured connection points. That the proposed GF RP details for the finials, ridge cresting, will match the detailed dimensions, profiles, and color and sanded finish of the historic masonry. I'll use utilizing a lighter weight material putting less stress on the delicate spires. The ridge cresting will be routed and attached to the spires in a manner that will not be apparent from the street level. And that the work will aid in the long preservation of the building. However, I recommend that the applicant work with the staff and that the staff consult with the commission's structural consultant to view the details of the attachments and materials and other connections from the perspective of long-term maintenance and preservation of the building.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Move to the next item.
Hey, I'm going to read the next two items in together. They'll be presented at the same time. Item three, LPC twenty-four dash zero seven zero six nine. An application for a certificate of appropriateness. The Borough of Manhattan, Block twelve seventy-one, Lot thirty-eight. Seven twelve Fifth Avenue, AKA seven twelve to seven sixteen Fifth Avenue. Rizzoli and former Cody Building Individual Landmark. Seven twelve Fifth Avenue, the Rizzoli Building, a neo-French classic-style building designed by Albert S. Gottlieb and built in nineteen oh seven to oh eight. Seven fourteen Fifth Avenue, the former Cody Building, a commercial building with French design details, designed by Woodruff Leaming and built in nineteen oh seven oh eight. And seventeen, seventeen, seven sixteen Fifth Avenue, a building designed by Bayer Blender Bell Architects and built circa nineteen ninety. This application is to re-clad and modify the facade of seven sixteen Fifth Avenue and install awnings and signage. And then item number four, LPC twenty-four dash zero seven three one zero. This shares all of the same traits and characteristics and facts that I just read in. So I'm just going to read that this application is for a modification of use and bulk. And is to amend a special permit to allow for facade re-cladding and modifications to seven sixteen Fifth Avenue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Valerie Campbell. I'm a partner at Kramer Levin, and we're land use counsel to Harry Winston, the long-term CEO of seven sixteen Fifth Avenue. I'm here today with Cass Spackelberg and Sarah Shearer from Higgins Quaysbar, Ken Park and Christian Fiorello from Kenneth Park Architects, Eric Valenzuela from Harry Winston, and Teru Chalde from Jordan Thomasetti. Seven sixteen Fifth Avenue is located on the west side of Fifth Avenue, mid-block between West Fifty-Fifth and West Fifty-Sixth Streets. It is ZONE C five three and is in the Fifth Avenue sub-district of the special Midtown district. The Fifth Avenue sub-district is designed to preserve, protect, and enhance the character of Fifth Avenue as the showcase of New York and national retail shopping. Seven sixteen Fifth Avenue is actually also the product of zoning. It is not an independent building. If you look at the map, the aerial photo on the right, you will see that there is a large office building that is directly behind seven sixteen Fifth Avenue. Seven sixteen is also connected to the two Fifth Avenue buildings that are landmarked. The Rizzoli Building at seven twelve Fifth Avenue and the Cody Building at seven fourteen Fifth Avenue. However, seven sixteen Fifth is not a historic building. It was constructed in nineteen ninety and is not landmarked. The larger project that includes seven sixteen Fifth Avenue was constructed pursuant to a seventy-four seven eleven special permit approved in nineteen eighty-six that included the construction of the fifty-one-story commercial office tower. And it was set back fifty feet from the facades of the landmark Cody and Rizzoli Building, as well as the construction of seven sixteen Fifth Avenue, which filled the gap in the Fifth Avenue street wall between the Cody Building and the Harry Winston Building, located at the corner of Fifth Avenue and West Fifty-Sixth Street. You see the Harry Winston Building on the right, which is a separate building that is not part of the special permit development or is subject to Landmarks review. And immediately to the left of the Harry Winston Building, you see seventeen sixteen Fifth Avenue. And left of that is the Cody Building, and left of that building is the Rizzoli Building. And the office tower is behind. You see that it's set back fifty feet. The special permit allowed the office building to set back this far from the landmark buildings and also allowed for a lower street wall along Fifth Avenue. The landmark buildings at seven twelve and seven fourteen Fifth Avenue were restored and are subject to a continuing maintenance program as a condition of the special permit. The current application proposes to alter the facade of seven sixteen Fifth Avenue in conjunction with the planned expansion of Harry Winston into the building. This expansion will increase Harry Winston's retail space as well as its workshops on the upper floors. Harry Winston has occupied seven eighteen Fifth Avenue as its flagship location since nineteen sixty. The proposed new stone facade for seven sixteen Fifth Avenue will echo the materials and the architectural features of the flagship store. But seven sixteen Fifth will retain its distinct identity and its separation from the landmark Cody and Rizzoli Buildings. No work is proposed on the landmark buildings. But Landmarks has jurisdiction and is reviewing the proposed alterations to seven sixteen Fifth Avenue in conjunction with the, excuse me, the original certificate of appropriateness that was granted for the special permit project that includes the two landmark buildings and in connection with the report that LPC issued to the City Planning Commission for the special permit. LPC did not comment on the specifics of the design or the materials of seven sixteen Fifth Avenue, but focused on the elements that establish the harmonious relationship with the two landmark buildings, specifically its scale and massing. Both the C of A and the report stated that the new structure at seven sixteen Fifth Avenue maintained the scale and massing of the two adjacent landmark buildings and maintained the facade in the same plane as the landmark buildings. We are asking Landmarks to approve the new facade on this basis and to revise its report to the City Planning Commission to review this approval. City Planning may approve this change with a letter of substantial compliance or perhaps a minor modification. We believe that the application deserves the commission's support because the facade alterations will not impact any historic fabric, will be consistent with the original LPC approval, and because the revised design will continue to harmonize with the landmark buildings in terms of the scale and the character of the streetscape. It will also support a substantial investment in one of New York City's premier jewelry stores that contributes to the special retail character that makes Fifth Avenue so special. Cass will now describe the history of the site and the proposed alterations.
Thank you, Valerie, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Just this. I'm just going to take a minute to make sure everybody's clear on sort of the individual players, as we like to say. Sort of as one moves left to right across the block front between Fifty-Fifth and Fifty-Sixth Streets. So on the left margin of the photograph, the brownstone facade, that is the Fifth Avenue Presbyterian Church. Not a landmark constructed in eighteen seventy-five, but part of this block front composition. Directly to the north is seven twelve, which became known as the Rizzoli Building, where the publishing company was headquartered. Next to that is the Cody Building. Both the Rizzoli Building and the Cody Building were constructed and completed in nineteen oh eight. Cody, the perfumery, began occupying the building in the nineteen, about nineteen thirteen. And under that occupancy, Cody commissioned Renee Lalique to design the windows for those upper floors. So those windows, here's the pointer here, on the second, third, and fourth floor are really spectacular cast glass Lalique windows. Seven sixteen Fifth, as Valerie described, that is recent construction that was part of the overall development for the fifty-one-story tower. It was designed by Bayer Blender Bell and completed in nineteen ninety. So this little eighteen-foot-wide insert is not historic and not landmarked, but was part of the overall development site. And then seven eighteen, Harry Winston's headquarters, constructed in nineteen sixty. What's fascinating about the site of seven sixteen in particular is the tremendous change that has occurred on this site. There have been at least six different buildings within a hundred years on this one site. So this is the earliest photo that we found of a corner site. So this is the building that predated, well, that dates to the eighteen seventies. Originally, there was a group of brownstone-fronted row houses, seven fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, and then down Fifty-Sixth Street. So you can see these two buildings. So originally, actually, seven sixteen and seven eighteen were, had a relationship to one another. They were both brownstone-clad row houses. And then you can see seven fourteen and seven twelve here. By nineteen eleven, seven sixteen had been demolished and reconstructed as a small-scale jewelry shop here at seven sixteen. And then there were progressive changes, turned to a bank in the nineteen thirties, and then a furniture showroom later in the twentieth century. And you can also see the changes, of course, that occurred at seven eighteen over time from that original row house to the Steuben Building, to ultimately to the Harry Winston Building in nineteen sixty. And this is a little bit more detail, just sort of taking you through that chronology, just to illustrate how much change there has been on the site of seven sixteen. So again, the row house clad in brownstone, this Art Nouveau style designed by Meineke and Frank as a jewelry shop, the bank building, then the furniture store, which was originally constructed as a two-story building, then enlarged in the early nineteen eighties to three stories, and then ultimately demolished and replaced with the building that stands there today. So it has this interesting history of adaptation and reconstruction, really throughout the twentieth century. In the nineteen eighties, this proposal for a large-scale development on the site, the Cody and Rizzoli Buildings were designated in nineteen eighty-five as a precursor to the development of the property and were subject, obviously, to the special permit. And you can see seven twelve and seven fourteen here, and the tower rising beyond it in the back fifty feet set back. The tower, as it exists today, it's clad in limestone with polychrome elements and cast features. The approvals describe the polychrome detail as being a means of differentiating it from the landmarks. Obviously, the scale differentiated as well, but the polychrome was another means of differentiating it from the two landmark properties at seven twelve and fourteen. Looking at the approvals from the nineteen eighties, and I think it's worth just reading this. This is the notice of approval from nineteen eighty-five. The commission also found that the design of the new building includes the replacement of 716 Fifth Avenue with a structure which exceeds in retaining the scale and massing of the two adjacent landmarks and which maintains facade in the same plane along Fifth Avenue. So as we noted earlier, the findings really focus not on design, but on scale and massing and the position of the street wall or the front facade of 716 in relation to the landmarks directly to the south. Subsequently, in 1987, in the special report, following some revisions to the designs of the storefronts and the design of 716 Fifth Avenue, which have also been refined, were found to further the perception of 712, 14, and 16 as separate discreet structures. And I think, as you'll see in the proposal, that relationship is maintained in this proposal. Looking at some existing photographs of 716 currently, clad in stone, sort of abstracted classical detailing. When you look at it closely, these are sort of typical 1980s, 90s details with panels and caulk joints. It's not mortared, but it's sealant around all these different elements. And you do read that from the street. And turning to the line drawing, so this is an overall block elevation with the Presbyterian Church on the left running through to the Harry Winston Building at 718. And then a detail elevation here. So obviously, this is the area of work. And before we get into the design, I do want to just note that as part of the effort here, obviously, is the protection of the adjacent buildings, the adjacent landmark buildings at 712 and 14, and of course, 718 as well, but in particular, 714 with the Lalique windows. One thing that we've been talking collectively as a team is sort of how this, obviously, how the work is going to be done. Protection of the Lalique windows is the primary consideration and then the underlying landmarks as well. The process, because of the way 716 was constructed as an independent building at a later date, it has its own structural system. It's framed in steel. You can read that very clearly. We have photographs in the appendix if you'd like to see that. You can read the steel frame. There's a CMU backup and then stone cladding directly on the outside. So these buildings are not tied into each other with common bearing walls. So this is really a removals process. And all that's being removed is the outer cladding and the CMU. In fact, the CMU may even be able to stay. We're not sure at the moment, but this is not a demolition. This is a removals. And I think that's important in terms of how the work is going to be carried out, the amount of vibration. And as I said, the key piece here is about protection, particularly of the Lalique windows, but also, of course, the underlying landmark buildings directly to the south. So the proposal is to re-clad these four floors of the facade in travertine, matching the materials of 718, but obviously with different fenestration because of the floor levels, different building height, but with some relationship and materiality and across the base of the building where the retail portion of 716 will take place. As Valerie said, there's production, there's office use on the upper floors, but there is a distinction, obviously, but, sorry, I'll just leave those. There's a distinction between the two in floor heights, but I think most significantly, there's a clear distinction still between 716 and the two landmarks to the south, 14 and 712. In terms of materiality and just seeing the tones, again, the facade would be clad in travertine, fabric awnings on the upper floors, large show windows on the ground floor. And I'll show you a detail of this, but there's a four-inch reveal, a four-inch wide reveal set between the two buildings so that it's clear that these were not built, you know, at the same time. And of course, the floor level variations further support that. Some section details on the far left is an existing section. Directly to the side of that is the proposed section. There is no realigning of floor levels. So again, the work is solely happening at the outer plane of the front facade. Some profiles of the existing projecting silks courses and banding at 718. And then just a simple section of the awning at 718, which will be carried forward at 716. Some planned sections, I'll start with this one in the upper right. So this is a section at the third floor, just illustrating sort of typical detail here, enlarged here, recessed windows. You can see a detail here of the four-inch reveal with two-inch depth. And this section here showing the relationship of the street wall here. Actually, let me just go back two slides, sorry. I just want to make one point here on this existing section. I neglected to point out this section here on the existing is cut right here at the third floor. So in terms of the street wall, this is the existing street wall position of 716 in relation to the adjacent buildings. And then in the proposed, there is no change. So I want to just emphasize the fact that the street wall, obviously, is being maintained in the work that we're carrying out here. And then at the ground floor, the existing ground floor plan, the proposed, the main entry will be here at 718. Large show windows here at the ground floor of 716 for vitrines consistent with the elements that are being produced and sold at the building. Some rendered perspective views, again, the fabric awnings, ironwork, iron balconies or railings at the second floor, a detail of that four-inch reveal between 716 and 718, and then some of the detailing of the travertine across the base of the building. And then flipping around, looking to the south, again, just to emphasize the plenary and the consistency in the street wall between 714 and 716. And then at the ground floor, where there's this projecting and framing around the storefront at 714, slightly outboard of the existing and proposed facades at 716, but basically maintaining the street wall. Materiality, as I mentioned, the upper floor, upper portion of the facade will be done in travertine with blue fabric awnings, a granite water table, and then black painted ironwork. And this is a section just illustrating how the facade will come together with these travertine panels, about inch, inch and a half, inch and a quarter thick, hung off of a backup similar to the existing construction. And then just finally, a couple renderings. This is sort of a straight-on view, again, the existing view on the left, 712, 714, and 716, and then the proposed view, maintaining their distinction as three discreet structures and of course, maintaining the street wall plenary across the entire facade. And then one final view, sort of looking up along Fifth Avenue again, just maintaining the distinction between the buildings that are subject to the special permit. And also, I think, you know, thinking about the history of the site and the amount of change that has occurred on this site, another generation of a facade in this building in many ways seems appropriate. But I think, coming back to the special permit and what the findings are in terms of the relationship of massing and scale and street wall, we feel that we are consistent with those findings from the 1980s and we'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Mastor.
Yeah, I was wondering, what is the impetus behind wanting to do the facade change?
What is the, sorry?
What is the reason that you want to do the facade change?
So in large part, and Eric from Harry Winston can speak to this too, but in large part because of the new occupancy of the building by Harry Winston, there's an interest in sort of creating some connection. And as we said, there's both retail presence, but also office and manufacturing. So they're going to be occupying all portions of those four floors and connecting to the adjacent building.
Okay, other questions? Okay. If there are no questions, we'll move to public testimony and we might have questions after that. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Okay, I don't see anyone, so I will turn it over to Stephen to see if we have any remote participants.
Okay, we had one advanced registered participant, John Graham from Victorian Society of New York. John Graham, I'll be promoting you to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Graham for the Victorian Society of New York. As best as we can determine, the building by Bayer Blinder Bell at 716 Fifth Avenue is not a designated building and is not on a landmark site. Nonetheless, its design was carefully reviewed and approved by the commission as part of a special permit. This permit allowed construction of the tower that incorporates portions of the original lot of 716 and lots of the individual landmarks at 712 and 714 Fifth Avenue, the Cody and Rizzoli Buildings. We believe that the design of 716 is therefore inextricably and irrefratively tied to the existence of the tower. That tie doesn't mean that changes to the facade of number 716 can't be made. It does mean, however, that any proposed change must conform to the findings that the commission made in 1985 and 1987. And the commission couldn't have been more clear in its findings. It found that the new building, this is a quote, retains the scale and massing of the two adjacent landmarks building and, quote, "The design of 716 Fifth Avenue was found to further the perception of 712, 714, and 716 Fifth Avenue as separate discreet structures." The proposed new facade for 716 does exactly the opposite of what the commission approved. It subsumes number 716 into number 17 at the corner. By mimicking elements of the corner building's facade and taking away its own entrance, 716 now appears as part of the corner building or in addition to it rather than a separate building. It also weakens one of the great urban characteristics of this block of Fifth Avenue, a group of rowhouse-scale buildings repurposed and redesigned for commerce in the late 19th century and early 20th centuries. This vestige of old Fifth Avenue has become more and more scarce and precious since the 1980s. For these reasons, we find the proposal to be inappropriate and urge the commission not to approve it. We close by expressing our disappointment that a purveyor of fine and beautiful objects appears to have so little regard for beautiful work by important architects. Even though relatively new, number 716 contributes much to the historic character of Fifth Avenue, it shouldn't be sacrificed to what amounts to a branding exercise. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. I see that we have a raised hand from Historic Districts Council. I will be promoting you to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself and state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. The Historic Districts Council finds this proposal inappropriate. The applicant's presentation shows 1987 correspondence from the LPC, which holds that design appropriateness at this site is based on, quote, "the perception of 712, 714, and 716 Fifth Avenue as separate discreet structures," end quote. We believe that judgment should still hold in this case and that this proposal is inappropriate because it subsumes 716 into 718. Though 716 itself is not an historic structure, it is an example of very sensitive infill architecture that is harmonious with the streetscape while also maintaining its own distinct identity. As such, it serves as an important lesson about the possibilities of infill architecture, i.e. that it is possible to express both harmony and individuality within a historic district. This proposal makes that lesson illegible. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If any other participants in Zoom would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing as there are no other participants, that concludes the online testimony section. We do have, coming in moments ago, a resolution from Community Board Five recommending approval.
All right, so would you like to respond to the comments? And I think, you know, there were really like the three issues, the three things that we had made in our original findings about the scale massing and that 712, 714, and 716 read as independent discreet structures. And if you want to address that, that seems to be the focus of the complaint.
Yeah, and you know, I'll state up, again, this is an unusual application, unusual for me, probably somewhat for you as well. The focus of this, and I think it's worth noting, sort of Victorian society is right. This building is, 716 Fifth Avenue is not a landmark. It's not even sort of on a landmark site, but it was part of an overall development. And I think the Commissioner's findings were quite clear in 1985, noting that 712, 714, and 716 were part of the determination that was made. That was the focus. 718 is outside the bounds of the review because it's an independent building. So I think this rendering, I think, clearly shows that adjacent to the church, 712, 14, and 716 still do retain the scale and massing, or 716 still retains the scale and massing of the two adjacent landmarks. And together, there is a clear perception of these being discreet buildings. It is true that, you know, there is a reference back to 718 in the re-cladding of 716, but I think it's important to note that the focus of the review, both in the 1980s and today, are just those three buildings, 712, 714, and 716. And I'll just finish by just addressing a comment that the Victorian Society said about the rowhouse scale of this block front of these buildings. And I think that's very important. You know, there are small-scale retail buildings throughout this stretch of Fifth Avenue, not many left. This is sort of one stand of them. And I think the way 716 reads, particularly with the fenestration that does not line up with 718 on the upper floors in particular and the way the roof and balustrade is treated, those are distinct. You still can read these as four separate structures. Their floor levels are different, the articulation is different. There are some commonalities, obviously, across the base of 716 to 718, but these still read as four individual structures. And I think that's important. I think that sort of rowhouse history is important and it's carried forward here. It wasn't necessarily one of the findings of the Commissioners, but I do think it is relevant and I think it's maintained.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
I have a question about structures and definition. I mean, when you say "structure" is one thing, but each structure should have an entrance? Is it a building or a structure? Your definition is that you don't have to have an entrance if it's a structure, right? If it's defined as a structure, it doesn't have to have an entrance?
Ours does not because it's going to be connected on the inside. It has a presence on the street with the show windows.
And the facade, the facade question.
Yeah, I think the determination was really about the scale of the building and its position relative to its neighbors. Is it a complete building? Does it have to have all the different independent component parts?
It doesn't have to have an element of a facade, has an entrance.
So what's interesting is if you remove that element and you call it a structure, it's a matter of definition. Right, right.
And we selected a definition saying that it's just a structure, so we don't have to have an entry.
I'd say, I think we're thinking about it as a structure in a sort of more generic term and not sort of, it needs to be an independent structure that operates with its own entry door and its own egress system and its own vertical circulation. It's a structure, it's on the street, and it has a facade and a fenestration, but it doesn't operate necessarily nor does it need to operate as an independent building.
It is part, this certificate occupancy includes all three buildings on Fifth Avenue and the tower behind. So that's why we sort of refer to it as a structure just because it is not.
I hear you. I mean, it's very clever what's been done in terms of definition of what. It wasn't clearly defined by the LPC. They said "structures," whether that, they didn't say "structures." They were vague. You played on that, that's fine.
One way to maybe think about it, as Cass said, at the time of the application in the 1980s, 718 wasn't part of the project. So we were looking at a new building at 716 that was part of the development site that included the two individual landmarks. And I think what the commission was trying to do is ensure that the new building didn't morph into or, you know, sort of subsume the landmarks. And they wanted the infill piece to read distinct so that the two landmarks still read as individual buildings. And so what I guess we can think about is whether that means it has to read as a rowhouse or whether it can read as something connected to 718 that still allows those two individual landmarks to not be subsumed in their. or whether it can read as something connected to seven eighteen that still allows those two individual landmarks to not be subsumed in their design. I think, is that, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
I don't have anything else.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and, and this is unusual for us because we are not necessarily looking at this the way we would with any new infill within a historic district. This was a, the, a development that underwent a special permit. And as part of that process, we had to find that the overall project had, A, a preservation purpose, which included a restoration plan, and B, that the bulk waivers they were seeking had resulted in a harmonious relationship to the landmark. And so the, the findings, we've parsed out here, were not about design for this infill piece, but were that the scale amassing related to the individual landmarks to ensure that that setback tower would read as something distinct and that the facade be in the same plane as the individual landmarks. And then in a later amendment, we noted that revised storefronts helped seven sixteen to read as a separate and discreet structure from seven twelve and seven fourteen. So we have to find whether the proposed re-cladding today is consistent with those findings. And so I don't know, Mark, if there's anything you want to add to that.
No, I think that, I think you summarized it very well. I mean, this is obviously something that is not in any way the focus of this whole approval and is something that was really intended to make sure that the landmarks continued to read as a landmark and they didn't want to have some relationship to the scale, and that is why they made those findings.
Okay. All right, so with that context, we'll begin our discussion. And so we'll go ahead and start. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Considering that focus of, of protecting seventeen, seven fourteen, seventeen twelve and distinguishing them from sixteen and eighteen, which look like they had histories of different styles and, and massing. I, it's interesting, because when I first looked at it, I, the only reaction I had was the streetscape. I understand what we're looking at now. I don't think I would impose an entry. It doesn't make sense for the use of that building corner as one singular unit. I do feel that it does express its scale and the upper portion. It is divided. The windows are not lined up horizontally, and there is a reveal between the two. In terms of that massing sensibility, I still think it retains some of that character. With that, I do want to add that I am a little concerned that the fabric of seventeen, seven fourteen is not hurt in the process. I think, Cass, you explained that this is really a surface finish job. I don't recall understanding what the substrate on the existing seven sixteen is. I just want to make sure if that's full mortar. There's a lot of chipping. There needs to be monitoring of vibration of all these things so that that delicate glasswork isn't damaged on seven fourteen. Otherwise, I think this is appropriate.
Okay, and I think you will share with us your structural plans and your monitoring and vibration, your vibration plans, okay? Commissioner, Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I think in terms of, you know, the things that we're looking at, the scaling, the massing, and being a discreet building, the scale and mass are the same. Does it read as a discreet building? I believe so, especially compared to the two landmark buildings adjacent. And in terms of the retail portion, which is the bottom, which is probably more cohesive, I think we usually give more leeway in terms of the retail section to allow, you know, tenants to have more freedom. So that part doesn't bother me. I think that the fenestration and then the roof line make it distinct or discreet enough. So I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I, it's, it's a very kind of well-designed, a precise design solution to solve a problem. You know, this problem-solving design, I call it. And the idea of this is that you're actually making one building, really, in fact. And when you look at it, you know, the base are consistent, the material is consistent, the, the lines are consistent, the whole thing is consistent.
Right.
And, 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 you know, the second floor and one of them shifts slightly, you know, it's fine. But I think it's, it, 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 it doesn't work visually because if you wanted three distinct, from following the definition, three distinct buildings, that's the definition. It looks to me like it's one building.
It is connecting and to you looking like it's one building with seven eighteen, but the findings were about looking separate from seven twelve and seven fourteen.
Separate from the, from the twelve, but the other two are one, there's supposed to be three, you know?
Right.
So these two are connected.
The corner building was not part of the original plan, so it wasn't included in the findings. So that's the question, is does the combining of these two facades, does that make it not distinct from the two historic buildings?
From this one, it's, the third one is, is
Yeah.
It's a different structure, but the other
Two to the left of it.
The two to the left, but the, the I could, I could find it's, it's, it's
Okay, but, okay.
It, it, it looks to me like it's one building.
Six, seven eighteen.
The reveal doesn't do that much for me. And I went there yesterday to look at it. And, but the base being totally consistent, it's saying that it's, it's saying something.
Right.
Sarah, can I just, my reading, my interpretation of the previous determination was that twelve, fourteen, sixteen don't look alike. Done.
That's right.
Done. Eighteen was not a part of that discussion.
That's right, eighteen wasn't part of it.
Right, that's, okay.
So it's, it's the two to the left and then the infill piece. There. Yeah. Yes. That's the question. Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Well, I actually agree with Commissioner Jefferson's original position on this one, which is that there's no door. And forgetting the door for the moment, though, this was originally, this site was an independent building, a separate building. Then it, you know, disappeared and we built another, you know, it's a new building now. And normally we give a lot of latitude to that, but I don't think it's appearing as an independent building. I do think that it looks distinct somewhat from the adjacent building. And it, I mean, they done, made some effort with the fenestration and height and so forth. And, you know, it's a very nice matchup with the corner building. So it appears to be an extension of the corner building. And there's, the only thing wrong with that from my point of view is that, I guess, it started out as an independent building. And now we're changing. And when we, it, they didn't come to us, and it's not their fault, they didn't come to us. They didn't come to us with the two sites and say, the corner building and this one, and say, okay, we're demolishing this and we want to build a beautiful new, you know, building, which would be great. That's not a problem. But we've got this building that was built, you know, and rebuilt and on the corner. And then we've got this site, which was originally a little two-story building, or one, I guess, then two, now it's gone. But to me, it's not, it doesn't present as an independent building. And I actually feel that if there were a weight to do something with a door-window situation, just have windows across and a door maybe, that you could actually solve that problem without completely obliterating what they're trying to do, which gives a sense of the same thing, of course. So that's, that's where I'm going on it.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
I think, well, I'll let, I'll let Well, yeah, I just, I just think it's really clear for all the commissioners, remember that, that the fact that the commission made some very basically broad brush findings. This is not what this approval is about. This is basically the commission ensuring that what goes in this, in this space is not going to detract from the two landmarks. And for example, I don't think there's any reason to think that if, if they had proposed at the time to extend, you know, seven eighteen over, that there's anything that, that would have indicated the commissioners, other than it's referenced in an individual building, but that's because it was an individual building at the time. But if they had proposed to extend it over, I don't think there's any reason to think the commissioners would have said, oh, no, you have to do something different. So I think, you know, or, or it could have been done with a reveal. I don't think they were looking to recreate a historic building, to, to, to really demand much other than whatever went there was in, in a scale that was, you know, sympathetic and harmonious with these individual buildings, landmarks, and didn't detract from them.
Right, and I think, again, in the context of this application, we were really looking at this, this tower behind the landmarks.
Yes.
And the infill piece was connected to that. And so the question was, how does all of this new construction not subsume or overwhelm the landmarks? And so that was, I think, why they wanted the two landmarks to be distinct and legible. And that, I think, was the, the purpose behind those findings. And again, in the first approval, it was just scale massing and the name of the street wall. The reference to the district, the separate structures from seven twelve and seven fourteen came in a revised scheme where the storefronts are being revised. And it said that it still maintained that, just the discreet.
So, continuing this for a second. So if, you know, I was trying not to just go to the original ruling because we, we make new rulings too. I mean, that's not, I don't, I don't think we're bound, you know, eternally by everything that's said before. Obviously, sometimes we are, depending on what it is. So if, if there weren't, if none of the other, if the other building hadn't been built and so on and so forth, and this was just a, um, somebody bought this, you know, site next to this building. I mean, we could decide whether it would look, you know, appear to be an extension of this or not. I mean, there's, there's no rule that we have to obviously maintain a separate building. A sense of separate, a sense of a separate structure on the same, I would just say historically, you could argue there was one and you, you'd like that to be reflected, but go ahead.
No, I, I think that's true. I mean, I think what you said, the commissioner does, the commission does have flexibility, right? But I think what the important thing I think here is that the, the commission took a very sort of broad, generalized approach to reviewing this, not what it would typically take when it's looking at, you know, a new building in the site. It's really trying to just make sure it's not detracting from, from the landmark and that the streetscape kind of reads that way. So I think that's all we're trying to say, is that it, it could have been part of the other building, could not to the point is the streetscape has a certain rhythm and scale. Go ahead.
Okay, anyway.
Yeah, this is a, an interesting little puzzle. And I, I think, I think, Mark, you, you nailed it on the head as far as I was considering it. It's like, now, if, putting, putting oneself back in the mind of the, of the commission at the time of the approval, there was never a consideration of the corner building. However, had the corner building been in play, how would the commission have ruled such that it would be consistent with their approval of the tower behind it? And I think that there's a very solid argument to make that under those conditions, the distinction between seven sixteen and seven eighteen is a legitimate consideration since, as the historical images show, seven sixteen and seven eighteen have always been developed as separate buildings and that the street rhythm that you referred to incorporated that rhythm. The creation of an extended seven eighteen for all intents and purposes modifies that rhythm. And I think that it's a reasonable consideration to say, was the streetscape, the rhythm of the street as it was configured at that time, you know, part of the consideration? And I think that you have to say yes. And there's something about the scale of those townhouses, the ones that are designated, that is continued in the, in the proposed one, that has an ameliorating effect on the overall streetscape and on the landmarks that are protected. So from that perspective, I agree with my, my commissioners to my left. I think the solution is not a difficult one, though. I think that, for me, when I look at the Fire, Blind and Bell solution, what's successful about it is that it frames Cody Building in a very, in a nearly symmetrical condition. And the way it does that is above the second floor, so third, fourth, and whatever that fifth floor is, I guess. I guess it's not really a fifth floor or whatever. I don't know. The, the two, the upper floors above the second floor have a vertical reading to them. The decision by the applicant to make everything travertine and use the same storefront does a lot of work to join the two buildings together. I think that if the applicant were to look, and I don't think there's anything bad about the storefronts being the same because I think that even in situations like this where you have multiple buildings, the, you know, we often see, or we sometimes see unified or extended storefronts that extend across multiple buildings. So I don't think that the extension of the storefront, per se, is a bad thing. And I think that the fact that that leads over is okay. I also think that travertine, per se, is not an inappropriate material for an infill building on that block. I think that the thing that's, that they should look at would be the expression of the cornice and upper, upper floors such that they, they, despite their odd fenestration, you know, that's discordant with the, with the buildings at the right, they kind of, it kind of, it's the glue that holds the two buildings together, for me. And I would say that they could look at the way that those were expressed, maybe make it more vertical, maybe, you know, carry some of the details from seven twelve or the simple lines from seven twelve, which were intended in the floor distinctions in seven fourteen or whatever, seven sixteen, to kind of tie the buildings together in some slight form of reciprocity, let's say, with seven twelve, that kind of frames the, the Cody Building in a more effective way. I think that you would, I think if you drew the building away from Winston and towards Cody a little bit more, you could effectively keep the travertine, keep the fenestration, keep the storefront all the same.
Okay. All right, very interesting way to solve a problem. So I think, so where we are today is we don't have enough votes to support this as presented. So we'll take no action, and I think that there is still some refining to think about in terms of this building's relationship to the two landmarks and whether that means studying the ground floor or, as has also been suggested, studying some of these lines at the upper floors to help it to frame the landmarks might help it to read as distinct from the corner and help to sort of recall the rhythm of, of the streetscape. So a little bit, a little bit more thought, and we'll have you back when you're ready. All right, thanks.
We're now going to move to public hearing item number five. But first, I will note that item number six was laid over. That was LPC twenty-four dash zero five four nine four nineteen Circle Road in Douglaston. We will not be presenting that today, and we'll see that at a future public hearing date. So, public hearing item number five, LPC twenty-four dash zero four three zero seven, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block eleven twenty-eight, Lot sixty-one, three thirty-one to three thirty-nine Columbus Avenue, AKA sixty West Seventy-sixth Street in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. This is a Renaissance Revival-style flats building designed by Henry Anderson and built in eighteen ninety-two to ninety-four. And the application is to replace storefront infill and install signage.
Well, I, my name is Huntley Gill from Guardia Architects, and I hope this one is simpler than the last. This is a application for replacement of a storefront on Columbus Avenue. This is a application for replacement of a storefront on Columbus Avenue, and it's right in the middle of the West Side Central Park West Historic District, and it's right in the middle of the Columbus Avenue Business Improvement District as well. And through a horrible twist of fate, I was drafted to be compared with that district just as we went through the COVID, so I'm very involved in the retail activity going on on the street. And of course, as you know, I'm sure in Columbus Avenue in Amsterdam, having these, the storefronts, the historic storefronts, really, the butchery and the changes started almost immediately after they were built. In this instance, we really don't have any pictures or any evidence about what the original storefronts looked like in the early twentieth centuries, but I'm not sure it matters too much, because they did change so many times. And here's the designation, the nineteen eighties tax photos, and you can see what has been done to this poor building. Of course, it was, it was cut up and all of them down the avenue, really, sort of been slammed on the front without any real thought before designation. Although, of course, some of the great, some of these are great old Columbus Avenue tenants' residences, and Cherry, Cherry was the place where everybody went, and they had a hangover. This, the storefronts were changed post-designation and turned into basically the brownstone. At some point, the brownstone was restored on the outside of the framed openings. The only historic material that rests are the cast iron blasters that are still there. After designation, there was an application due that was approved for the gap, and then that was taken over by Chase Bank, which basically adapted it a little bit. You can see that there was a, a, it's better with the photograph. Existing conditions. They kept the historic blasters, they put simple glass in every bay. These blasters kind of didn't, they don't go all the way to the corners, they just sort of stop at what I guess was meant to be a sign band, but never was. And that was never really resolved, because it was sort of silly, I'm sorry, put in this kind of silly, modern ironwork there to try and figure out how to make the blasters hold something, because they weren't holding anything. The new use is important to us on the avenue. It's a restaurant. And Columbus Avenue, unlike Amsterdam Avenue, doesn't have a lot of restaurants, for reasons that I've never understood, the, part of the, the tenant buildings on Columbus Avenue tend to run parallel to the avenue, whereas on Amsterdam, they run perpendicular. So Amsterdam is filled with restaurants, since that works well for restaurants. Columbus doesn't. Columbus is great for retail. It's a deep space, and it's mermaid in. Mermaid in, very fondly, a very fond part of the Upper West Side, and it's coming back, and it's really, really happy. As you know, restaurants, Columbus Avenue is a great retail strip that's been very successful. They're very much reinforced by restaurants. It extends our day, it brings a type of complimentary crowd, both local residents and visitors. The storefronts that we're proposing are multi-light. We are addressing the issue of the signboard, which was previous, and just this kind of long strip with this wacky metal stuff going on, but little inpost blocks with the mermaids, to kind of design the sign, divide the signboard up into six signboards. We're only using one of them above the actual entrance. And those inpost blocks are, you know, kind of the right portion to sit on top of the blasters. There are, one of the trademarks of this restaurant are the gooseneck lamps, which luckily fit right into landmarks, standard, generally, the gooseneck lamps. Could have been approved with staff level, except the widest storefront, for some reason, the regulations have, I mean, four feet, this is longer, but it's the same frequency, roughly, one every five or six feet. The interesting thing is that the trademark thing of this restaurant, a couple of trademark things of this restaurant are operable storefronts. All of their storefronts open above. And, you know, this is, I've got a great contractor years ago, a Russian, and they would invite us to dinner all the time, and we'd go to these restaurants, and of course, discovered that wasn't just, it wasn't just a restaurant, there was a portion of it else. And I said once to his wife, called Bumba, you know, do you ever just go out to a restaurant just to eat? And she said, you know, if you want to eat, you can stay home. Every, and there's a truth in this, restaurants, you know, part of it is theater, right? And, and part of what mermaid in is, the theater of having data open is completely, and that's the plan. They're designed so that when they're closed, you really shouldn't be able to tell that they're open, that it read as multi-light storefronts. And you can see they're almost in the same plane, and we're very proud of the amount of work we did with the vendor, kind of get that plane to kind of work well. Here's a section, and you can see, we've got the signband on the top, we've got a continuous register for air conditioning points all the way across, unlike the previous plan that just had one, which is kind of awkward in one day. Then another kind of layer for retractable awnings, which also conforms to the commission's rules. And then the storefronts below, you can see, if you hit section, how this operable storefront actually works. Another little detail, section plan, to show how that's worked out, and I'm quite happy that it's worked. Some renderings to show you, the, the, another, the one thing we did give up on is that the applicant really likes white storefronts, that's part of their brand, and he went to community board, and they went, ooh, nice plan. We like everything, we don't like the white storefronts. We went to Landmark West, they said, nice plan, we really like, we don't like the white storefronts, we changed the white storefronts. And I do think, at the end of the day, it reads better, it's black, frankly, so I think it's a good change. There are lots of other multi-light storefronts on the Upper West Side, so, you know, the retail environment there for the side in general is one that's pretty eclectic, to put it mildly. And I would add that these multi-light storefronts are often restaurants. And that reiterates our message, we want you to know that this is not another Gap, this is not another Chase Bank, this is a restaurant. And, and the multi-light configuration reinforces that. Lots of other Upper West Side in the districts, restaurants, including Sarabes, the Amsterdam gave it to me, first and in second, as far as I can tell, is probably pretty close to an original storefront as well. These are other mermaid ins, you see their lights, and you see the operable storefronts read garage doors. And that's not what we wanted, we didn't think that was appropriate for the site. It might work well in Soho, it might work well on Second Avenue, it doesn't work well on Columbus Avenue, so the doors that we have don't read garage doors very much. That, I think, is all I can say.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
What, and you showed some of the historic, the older, the older photos of the building. What in the storefront assembly is actually original or historic?
The only thing that is historic are these blasters. These blasters, cast iron blasters are, that's the only thing.
And they exist.
They are there, and then, if you remember, if I go back, I go back to the Gap, Chase Bank's configuration, you can see that those were saved, but then they're kind of really supporting nothing, right? There's this wacky thing, it just goes across the top.
And that was added at some other point.
Right, so then what we did is try to redefine these as beds, by putting some inpost blocks of the, the blasters are doing something, so they're just sitting there.
Okay.
Does that answer that? That's a better illustration. Can I ask you a question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
That's just an existing curb that we're going to keep, but it's already wood. Now, it's going to have a wood plating on it, that's just what they like. They got to take care of it, right? Good luck.
All right, other questions? All right, let's see if we have any public testimony. I'll note there is no one in the hearing room, so Stephen, do we have any remote participants?
Yeah, I see that we have one participant with their hand raised, Megan Fitzpatrick. I will be promoting you to panelists, after which we request you to unmute yourself and state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, Commissioners, Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee met with the applicant, and after collaborative discussion, we are glad to see the client understood our concerns about the proposed color of the design and changed it to a much preferred darker shade presented. We are also glad to see a simplified signage layout that no longer dominates the storefront. We can support this application as a welcome addition to Columbus Avenue that will no doubt enliven the streetscape. We deem this application appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. I also see a raised hand by John Graham. I will be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The proposed storefronts require some revisions before we can recommend approval. Of the six bays along Columbus Avenue, the applicant is proposing to install what are in fact full-width glass and metal roll-up garage doors in three of them. Drawings should be provided that show what the building will look like when the three doors are open. This type of infill has no historic precedent for storefronts and buildings of this age and type. There are more appropriate ways, design storefronts that can be partially open in mild weather. We also note that there are low bulkheads at each of these openings, the details of which remain unclear in the presentation. They are apparently fixed in place and thus won't allow safe passage through the open doors. The gooseneck lighting above the sign is reasonable, but at the other bays, it will light only the tops of the black awnings. These lights should be eliminated, and consideration given to providing lights under the awnings, which will undoubtedly be desired by the diners but aren't shown. Finally, some sizes and positions of storefront elements should be adjusted. At around four feet high, the space between the historic masonry frieze and the storefront window is too tall. We suggest putting the awning just below the signband rather than below the louvers. This will help the proportions and also obscure the louvers. And for those bays without the sign, perhaps the well-made scrolling ironwork, though we assume it isn't historic, should remain exposed in front of the white painted wood band. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to contribute testimony? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing as there are none, I would like to note that Manhattan Community Board Seven recommends approval of the application, and Landmark West, we already heard from, recommends approval.
All right, and so before I turn back to the applicant, I do want to just note that the light fixtures are conformed to the rules and are therefore eligible for a staff level review, and are, that those pieces are not technically before us. So I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to the other comments we've heard.
Sure, I mean, I, you know, I think these doors will be open how many days a year? I think it'd be very cool, I just agree with the society. And you can't put louvers underneath them. And frankly, the, the design and some of our drawings do show the awnings closed, at which point, the gooseneck lights, what is in essence, the signboard, on the skirt of the lawn, that's exceptional. And part of it is to help light up the street at night.
Okay, any final questions, Commissioners? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I will.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. This is a proposal for storefronts, and again, to provide context, as the applicant said, their storefront, storefronts are very eclectic along Columbus Avenue, and that is in part because they change frequently. And then after designation, the commission applied a very hands-on set of, or used a very hands-off set of guidelines, and allowed for any storefronts to go in, as long as they maintained the street wall and didn't remove historic fabric. After a couple of decades of that type of regulation, the commission adopted citywide storefront rules, and so now those are the rules that are used for Columbus Avenue. But the result of, of our regulatory approach here has also lent itself to the eclectic nature of storefronts. And with respect to the garage openings, I think that's something that you'll have to think about when you have your discussion. But one thing I would say is that we have found that with storefronts, where the base is activated, it really does reflect how people entertain themselves and, you know, use stores and restaurants. And it sort of reminds me of a few decades ago, when we had to first start looking at storefronts that consisted solely of operable vertical doors, and ultimately found that even in an open position, when they, they, if they folded like an accordion, or if they slid open, or if they operated like casemates, and there would be a void at the opening, we found that to be appropriate if the original pilasters were there, or there were some mullions to provide some break in the void. And so, in this case, the proposal is to remove nonhistoric fabric, maintain the historic piers that create the rhythm of the streetscape, install this multi-light storefront, and three of the bays will operate, and when in use, will create an open condition, the other bays will remain fixed. So we'll have our discussion on both the configuration, the finish, the placement, and the operation of these storefronts. The awnings are also integrated, so they're before us, as well as the signbands. Correct, okay, so.
Just a question, what, for this applicant, this proposal, what goes beyond what a staff approval might be?
Thank you. We are looking at everything but the light fixtures.
Everything but the light fixtures.
Yeah. So it's the storefront infill, both in terms of their, in terms of their configuration, operation, materials, and finish? It's the awnings, and it's the signbands above. All right, Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Sure. This proposal has six bays, and three of them are operable. And, and I think it's very handsomely done, and I think it's, it's lovely. What, what's, what's interesting to me architecturally, though, I can approve it, but what's interesting to me architecturally is that if, if you were designing this facade, you, and you put black at that level, it won't quite work, you know, it would be, would be odd. And, and yet, at an urban level, walking by it, it's fine. So it's this kind of strange kind of contradiction with facade making, scale of it in relationship to the whole building, and scale of it in relation to walking by. I think it's handsomely done.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Commissioner Mastor?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's, one, I think it's very exciting that you have a restaurant, a well-known restaurant coming into this space and taking six bays. That's incredible, and I think it's going to really help the neighborhood quite a bit. I think that what they have here is a lot more attractive than what they had in the past. I, I think that with them retaining, you know, the cast iron columns and all that, with the multi-light windows in black, with the black infill, I think, I think it's very attractive. And, you know, the operable, I guess, the overhead windows, I think that's fine. I think that the awnings are fine. I think it's well done, and I can find it appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I would agree with my fellow commissioners. I think that it's a pretty rational approach. I want the applicant to work with the staff just on the final color selection. I'm noticing that the gray of the, of the cast iron is, it's gray, it looks like in the renderings, whereas the storefront garage doors are black. And I think that is important, as a distinguishing of the two, so I just want that to be clarified. I also just want the applicant to work with the staff on the detailing of where the white painted wood occurs. I also just want the applicant to work with the staff on the detailing of where the white painted wood occurs. I do think that it needs to feel articulated because the historic fabric is all around it. There looks to be, to be a flange around it, but I encourage that type of expression where there's a flange around each of those white rectangular panels and the wood sits inside of it with some bit of a gap. So it feels like infill into something. Otherwise, I feel like it looks a little bit too much like we just nailed wood onto the facade. And I would recommend the studying use of painted wood at the base that will not last very long and look bad. But otherwise, I think overall design is approvable.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
You know, I actually find it perfectly handsome and I think that, you know, I'm happy they're keeping the cast iron piers. I think the signage is restrained. The awnings, I think, are nice, attractive, operable windows. I think it's a good idea for air and ventilation. And after the period that we just went through, it's nice to have that ability in case there are issues. And I think the materials and finish also are attractive, so I can approve it as presented.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goldblum.
Great, I think it's certainly the sexiest garage doors I've ever seen. But it is open, it won't be as kind of bulky and intrusive as the kind of storefronts that we now commit on a regular basis where they have accordion or whatever slide. So I think it's, I think it'd be successful if the mullions, at a pulse store, mullions at storefronts, back to its uniform over the entire building. It could be an asset to the district and the building. I even see them, I took them to put wood down on the street and there are plenty of really nice black granites. They're for longer. I think the impos blocks are actually lovely and I wonder if the new tenants after the mermaid in passes after a very, very long time, would retain them or not. I just need to know. And I, I share the curiosity about the goosenecks and the canopy, but that's not our, our area. It's kind of a curiosity element, we want to apply them. Yeah, and I agree with Stephen on the contrasting colors in the panel detail.
Okay. All right, so I think we have a consensus to approve this. I'll make the motion and I'll add in these additional conditions. So in the matter of docket number LPC twenty four zero four three oh seven, three thirty one to three thirty nine Columbus Avenue in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, a Renaissance Revival style flats building designed by Henry Anderson and built in eighteen ninety two to ninety four. This is an application to replace storefront infill and signage. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the work will not damage, eliminate or conceal any significant architectural features, that the existing cast, historic cast iron columns and transom details will be incorporated into the new design, that the streetscape has historically featured a mixture of storefronts of varying periods and styles and that the new storefront design features a scale and articulation consistent with historic storefronts and will harmonize with the streetscape, that the repetitive design of the infill at each bay will create a unified composition throughout the base of the building, that the proposed infill featuring large metal multi-light windows, some of which are fixed and some of which are operable, overhead garage-type doors, integral louvers and a wood sign band will feature materials and finishes typically found at storefronts at neighboring buildings within this historic district, that the housing for the overhead operable storefront windows will be well-integrated within the storefront framing, that the mermaid logo plaques align with the cast iron piers below and help to break up the expanse of sign band across the base of the building and that the work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of the building, the streetscape or the historic district. However, I recommend that they continue to work in consultation with staff to review and for the staff to approve final finish samples for the storefront infill and the cast iron pilasters to ensure that there is a contrast, that they reconsider the material at the base of the building for something that will have a more durability, like a black granite, and that they provide articulation around the white sign bands to integrate them into storefront design and differentiate them from the building. All right, Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With six in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved. Please continue to work with the staff on those details. And that concludes our public hearing today. Thank you all for your hard work as always, and we'll see everybody on March twenty sixth, next Tuesday.